Welcome, everyone. We are really pleased to open this meeting with a spotlight on Cherokee.
Okay, good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Montgomery, our community members, lots of Cherokee families. I'm Kate Kavanaugh, the principal at Cherokee. And we wanted to take a moment tonight first to say thank you for investing in our new Language Arts Curriculum Amplify, which we're in first year of implementation. And we know that reading and writing are fundamental skills, but they're also truly that cornerstone of learning and understanding in every aspect of life. And you have really provided our students with the resources they need to become confident and proficient readers, but also they are gaining a really strong knowledge base in various topics. And as we finish our first year with Amplify, we thought it would be a great opportunity tonight for them to share what they have learned through this new curriculum in this first year. I think you're going to be pretty amazed at the knowledge and the skills that they are gaining, and we really look forward to see where this goes in the coming years. So we're going to start with a little video. Our kindergarten through second graders are going to share a little bit, teach you about Amplify, and then I have some of our third and fourth grade Cherokee Cheetahs that will share in person a few things that they have learned. Okay, Tiana, I think you can... Maybe go to the next one. You can play it, yep. There you go.
My name is Henry, and this is my word training for the...
My name is Jenny, and the teacher says the word, then you tap out the word, then you put the letters together to make the word.
My name is Liza, and I love chanting because it's really fun and so people can stretch their brain.
Let me show you how.
The first word is mash. Great, everybody has mash. Now change mash to rash. What word do you have in front of you?
Rash.
Can you change cash to can? Good, sounding out and tapping.
Hi, my name is Hattie, and this is my reader. And we read stories in here, and then we answer questions in our book. And then here, this one is called Sandy's Story, and then we ask you a question, and then we answer it, and then we put the page number. This is when we tell, like, we do complete sentences with uppercase letters and punctuation at the end.
Hi, my name is Jack, and this is my reader. After we read some stories of our reader, we go and we write an opinion. And our opinion, and we have to write our opinion about the book that we read.
Hi, my name is Kami, and one of the things, other things that we do in our workbook is we learn to spell words. For example, one of the things that, the song that we learned is, is words that are spelled with this, with the sound t. And for example, one of them is, it could be spelled t, another is tt, and another is ed, like part at the end of the word.
How does that sound?
Like part.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nolan, and I'm gonna tell how to, like, do, do the spelling trees. So the, the, the tree makes the sound ol, and all, all the branches do, do the spellings like ale, le, ul, el, and il. And then odd, odd ducks are the ones that don't have z's, but, but ma- makes the ol sound.
My name is Evelyn. This is the shua spelling tree. The shua makes the sound uh. In Africa, it has the a at the end. And in this branch, in category, the shua is an e, and it's right there. Category.
My name is Ellie, and in our workbook, we have been working on the ol sound, as in ul, al, and il, like the word total and hospital. In our, in our reader, we have been working, we've seen some words like vengeful and neutral.
As you can see, they are getting very explicit instruction in the rules of the code to be able to decode and, and read the text that they have in front of them. I'm going to turn it over to our third graders and then fourth graders on some of the things that they've learned this year.
We've learned so much this year in English Language Arts from reading about various interesting topics to writing and spelling. We have learned a lot about topics from historic times to current day. One topic I liked learning about was space. I thought I knew a lot about the topics in the units, but I learned so much more. Did you know that the Big Bang is still going on?
One thing that was different this year with Amplify compared to the years past is spelling. I felt challenged by the spelling words and the sentences and can read and write multi-syllabic words better than I did before.
I enjoyed our first unit about the wind in the willows, a classic tale. I have never heard a story like that before and discovered new ideas. The friendships and the morals of the story really got me thinking.
This year, we read about Roman gods and drafted opinion essays, which was one most in, which, about which was one, um, can I restart?
Yeah, go ahead. Want me to help you? So they learn, you learned about the Roman gods, right? And what did you do? You drafted opinion essays?
Which one was most important? The Viking unit was my favorite. I said it was over, I want to do it all over again.
They loved the Viking unit.
We have learned so much this year during ELA. Reading and writing were separate things before. Now it's combined and harder. The way we talk about stories and write about them is more challenging, and you have to dig deeper.
My favorite unit has been the American Revolution. We learned in-depth details of the time, and there is a feeling of adventure and mystery. My favorite part has been reading about Paul Revere's Ride. We even wrote a five-paragraph essay on events leading up to the American Revolution.
The spelling words are really hard. They are all related to a unit and are interesting words, so my vocabulary has grown. One strategy we learned to spell these challenging words is to chunk the words into syllables. Another thing we liked about Amplify is that we have readers. We read from them every day. We can have conversations with classmates about the text, and we can work together.
One interesting unit was the Eureka Unit. We learned about inventors, and then we created our own inventions and participated in challenges. We focused on teamwork. Sometimes ELA almost feels like Science and Social Studies.
Thank you, third and fourth graders, you did a wonderful job. Thank you for your support, and we appreciate it.
That was really incredible. Thank you to everyone who presented, and thank you for that excellent video as well. We hear a lot about Amplify, but we don't often get to see it in action, so it was really helpful to see that. And I'm hoping that before you go, we could possibly have you all come up here to take a picture. Thank you. That was an awesome presentation. And now to move on to even more awesome things. Tonight, we are at... Excuse me, my computer just did something. Tonight, we mark a bit of a turning point for the District 67 Board. And we are very grateful that our recently departed board member, now esteemed alderperson, Alice Levert, Levert is here, so that we can recognize and celebrate her many contributions to the district during her years on the board. It says a lot about who Alice is that she asked specifically that we not make a big deal out of celebrating her. And Alice, I'm sorry, not sorry, that we are going to ignore your wishes. In a moment, I will share a formal declaration on behalf of the board recognizing Alice's many contributions. On a personal level, I will say that I am so grateful for Alice's mentorship, guidance, and thoughtful approach. She was assigned as my board mentor when I first joined this group, and she spent time counseling me as I got up to speed on the many things that new board members need to know. She's an incredibly kind person, and I'd point out that she's unique in that she volunteered for this board even though she did not have children currently in the district. As we know, most taxpayers in Lake Forest also do not have children in the district, so she brought a very important perspective to our board. I think I will now, we have comments from a few others, and perhaps before I read the resolution, I might invite anybody who wants to make comments specifically about Alice's time on the board to do so. I have a few to read as well. Sorry, Alice.
Some of this doesn't work well if I'm not looking at you, so. Good evening, my name's Rob Lumke. So I'm here tonight to say thanks to Alice Levert for her time on the board. The last time I was in this room was my last day as a board member, and the last time I was standing here, I was being sworn in for my second term next to Alice, who was being sworn into her first term. From our first interaction, Alice and I hit it off. We approached our time on the board in a very similar way. We both value education and putting student learning first, but we also recognize financial and economic constraints and believe in data measurable outcomes and holding people accountable. Although I didn't have the time to pour through the minutes from our past meetings, I'm pretty sure on our four years together, all five two-votes had you and me in the two. But we did our best, we said what we thought, and we stuck by our values. We also served together on the Finance Committee, I think, for all four years, where your insights were always enlightening, and I appreciated your business acumen. Your insistence on bidding out contracts benefited the community greatly, as it allowed tax dollars to go farther and for the school district to get more value from vendors than a passive renewing of contracts would have ever produced. It's kind of amazing how many times we had to fight that battle. We were also on the board during COVID, and there, we disagreed more during COVID than any other time, but my respect for you never wavered, and your opinion and your perspective always was top-notch. You were always honest in expressing your views and stuck to your core values, and I think we always appreciated that in one another. My last 14 months on the board, from the start of COVID until May 2021, was horrible for, for board members. I see Justin in the audience, so he probably thinks more horrible for certain board members, but it was horrible for board members. It's a thankless job, so I will say thank you to you guys. It is a thankless job in the best of times, and it was absolutely horrible then, for a variety of reasons. Unlike you, that experience will likely keep me from serving in any public manner ever again. But if I ever am drawn back to public service and a historical crisis hits, I hope you're right there by me. Thank you, Alice, for your service at 67. I'm glad our, our terms overlapped. I'm so glad to be able to call you a friend. Your time and efforts helped the community more than you'll ever know, so thank you so much.
My name is Richard Chun. And I'm just going to sit here and stare at Alice because she is so uncomfortable right now. Alice Levert, my buddy, my soldier in arms on the board, and the conscience of 67. Her own children, fully grown young men, she served the district with honor and represented the 78% of the community that chose to fund the schools and live in Lake Forest. Along with taxpayers, Alice was a steadfast advocate for student teachers and District 67 staff. She never lost sight that 67 was independent from the local high school, yet she knew we needed to prepare our students to matriculate to the next level. I first met Alice in 2017, when I served on the Executive Board of the Caucus as we were searching for candidates for the school board along with Justin. Smart, funny, charming, and a rising exec, Alice was a perfect candidate. And a woman, serving as one of only two women in the seven-person board in 2017. Today, there are five women and two men on the school board. How things have changed for the better. Flash forward to 2019, when I was newly elected District 67 Board Member. Though it is publicly posted, the public may not realize that the school board meetings actually start at 5:00 for a closed session. These closed sessions can get heated, they can be boring, but my first one was really heated. As a board member, used a curse word in the meeting. Not a bad one, but a good one. Alice just gave the board member the stare behind those glasses, and a quick apology ensued. It's a very poignant moment for me to know when Alice speaks or gives you the stare, people listen. During my time with Alice on the board, she asked poignant questions and always had the students in mind before any approval of a proposed program. Went through a new principal search, COVID, and a new superintendent search together. Alice, outside of this school board, continued to volunteer as a judge for the Business Incubator Program at the high school. She volunteers downtown at the Illinois Board, Illinois Club of Catholic Women, and she is a connoisseur of Wisconsin Supper Clubs and the Kentucky Derby Parties. A huge supporter of the, and proud alumni of the Miami University of Ohio, Go Red Hawks, and the University of Notre Dame. She loves brats, she loves corn, and a brats and corn festival, she is there. She loves her Midwestern colloquialisms too. Rich, I'm telling you, if I had a nickel for every time they bring up that issue, I'd be a rich woman. And if you want a restaurant review, don't go to Yelp, just ask Alice, she'll give you the scoop. She is the fiscal monetary hawk of the board. She wants every penny spent on the betterment of the students with the best teachers. She wants a taxpayer dollar for District 67 to stay in the district. Stands for low administrative costs, zero waste, and abundant resources to produce the most educated children, children who can withstand the rigors of any high school they choose to attend. From her tenure on the school board to, to her current journey into municipal governance, Alice has exemplified dedication, integrity, and a relentless commitment to the betterment of our community. Thank you, Alice and Tim, for serving our community.
Just for those record, those meetings that start at 5:00 are open to the public.
Good evening, members of the board. Justin Englund, Ward 2. Alice, it's exciting to be able to say a few kind words to you tonight. First of all, just thank you. It was an absolute honor to serve on the board with you. You've made so many contributions that have helped Lake Forest kids, from the leadership roles that you embraced on the board, to the contributions that you made to policy, strategic planning decisions, or the thoughtful perspectives that you always had on hiring and personnel matters. But for me, what stands out most is how you set the tone for the culture on the board. You showed us all what it meant to listen with the intent to understand. You showed us how to disagree without being disagreeable, and you are often one of the last voices to speak, but one of the most listened to by other board members. Most importantly, you treated everyone with mutual respect. While it's not really the highest elected office around, being a Board of Education member is still an elected position, and right now, it's a really rare thing for any elected official to be known for being a great listener and being respectful for opposing viewpoints. Through some pretty challenging times, you showed us how to act like the people that we wanted to be. So, congratulations. I'm super excited that you're going to be on City Council, and I know you'll have just as much positive impact there as you did here. Thanks, Alice.
Anyone else here want to make a comment about Alice? I have a few to read as well. The first is from Jeff Volker. Hi, Alice, I'm sorry I won't be able to attend tonight's board meeting, but I wanted to pass along my deepest thanks to you for your outstanding service on Lake Forest, to Lake Forest and the children of District 67 over the past seven years. You were a pleasure to work with, and I always appreciated your dedication, patience, and insight. You brought intelligence, thoughtfulness, and compassion to a too often difficult and frustrating volunteer position. We made a heck of a team, though. Also, congratulations on your new alderman position. Out of the frying pan and into the fire, huh? Are you a glutton for punishment? Seriously, I know you'll approach this new role with the same dedication and enthusiasm as your board position. Thank you for your continued service. Love and honor, Jeff. And from Suzanne Sands, who also couldn't be here tonight. She writes, "It's a rare person who, who selects to serve their community on a school board. It's even rarer when that person's children are grown and have never even attained, attended the public schools the board supports. Alice Levert is a rare and dedicated community servant. We served together on the District 67 School Board for six years. During that time, Alice was always prepared for meetings, engaged fully in the work at hand, and found ways to build relationships with everyone. She also brought her genuine warmth to the role, always first to acknowledge birthdays and organize gift-giving celebrations. She and I attended the Illinois School Board Association Conference together numerous times. It was an opportunity to learn, engage in advocacy, and gain context by hearing about what happened in Springfield and in education across the state. We served on committees together, survived COVID, hired a new superintendent, and were president and vice president together in my final year on the board. Alice and I didn't always agree about everything, but we were able to deliberate, collaborate, and support our schools together based on the values we each brought to this role and the deep respect we have for one another. I'm personally grateful to Alice for her service on the District 67 School Board, and I'm thrilled that she will continue to serve our community on the Lake Forest City Council. I'm proud to consider her a friend and wish her all the best in this next chapter of her Lake, of her service to Lake Forest." At this time, I will read the resolution that the school board is adopting to celebrate Alice. Whereas, Mrs. Alice Levert has faithfully served the students, staff, and families of Lake Forest School District 67 as a board member from 2017 to 2024, has served as Board Vice President from 2023 to 2024, has served as Board Secretary from 2017 to 2023, has served as Chairperson of Finance and Operations, has served as a member of both the Education and Policy Committees, has served as a dedicated legislative liaison, advocating tirelessly for the interests of our schools and effectively communicating the needs of our students, our district to policymakers at all levels of government. Whereas, Mrs. Levert exudes passion, drive, and care for the students, teachers, staff, and families of District 67, has dedicated herself to listening, processing, and reflecting upon varying perspectives of stakeholders when making decisions. Whereas, Mrs. Levert's ability to make difficult decisions that challenge the status quo for the benefit of the greater good has contributed to thoughtful governance and District 67 Board service. Whereas, Mrs. Levert championed the interests of the broader community, effectively representing the majority of residents who do not have children in the school district. She has devoted countless hours over the course of several years in service to our Lake Forest school community through attendance at national, state, and regional conferences on behalf of District 67. Whereas, Mrs. Levert's dedication to the work of the Lake Forest Elementary School District 67 Board of Education is sincerely appreciated. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lake Forest Elementary School District 67 Board of Education expresses for itself, as well as for the parents, guardians, students, staff, faculty, and citizens of Lake Forest, its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Mrs. Alice Levert for her steadfast work to advance the quality of education, engagement, and inclusion for all students in our community. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be entered permanently into the minutes of the Lake Forest Elementary School District 67 Board of Education. Thank you, Alice. Thank you, Alice. I am a person of few words, but I do want to...
Okay, moving into the superintendent's report. The topics tonight, I'll start on the property tax bill and end with a little lighter note on the DPM 2024 graduation. But let's start with something that is top of mind for many community members, which is the tax bills that we just received. So, know that the tax bills are generated using information from the previous year, and the taxing bodies are, you know, while you are paying taxes to Lake County, it's getting divvied up to different taxing bodies within the community and the city. And if you think about it almost as a pie, and it's getting divided up in multiple different ways, and you can see examples on the screen right now of the different places in which money is getting divided. As we look at our rates on, I want to draw your attention to the right side of the screen, and you can see how Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood are divided up primarily in the biggest three buckets for Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, acknowledging that Knollwood does not have taxes going to the Village of the City. But you can see 115 is making up 28.63%, 67, 26.54%, and then the city at just under 25% of the tax bill. Lake Bluff is hovering at, for 115, 24.58. 65, District 65 is 39.41, and then the Village of Lake Bluff is 11.41. So, the proportion we are on the tax bill is varying by community, and you can see those differences on the screen. Factors that influence the property tax bill. These are essentially a cheat sheet that we'll post, obviously, online, but you can see the, you know, the fair market value is something you'll hear, which is your land plus the buildings that are on the property. Your equalized assessed value is one-third of your fair market value. So, if you're looking at equalized value and wondering why it's smaller than what is on Zillow or your fair market value, remember that the fair market value is the total amount divided by three will get you your assessed value. There's a tax cap. Tax rates are the total final levy divided by the total EAV, and I start to get into nomenclature, so people start to gloss over, and if Jen was here, she would be experiencing the same thing as we talk deeper into the tax bill. When we look at the referendum and what was promised from 115, we had $105.7 million referendum. We were borrowing that over 20 years, and we were projecting a promise of $974 per $1 million worth of home value. Where we landed, and we're proud of this, but taxes still went up in the end of the story, so I mean, acknowledge that while we want to be under, it's still an increase. We were estimating 974. Where we came in was at $870, and you can see the difference between the estimated debt service of being $182 million, and in actuality, it landed at $161 million. I'm thrilled that I'm not presenting us being over as opposed to being under. So, this is where we want to be from what we promised. The duration is still 20 years, but with that $104 less than projected, it is saving $21 million in interest because of that difference. And it was a highly competitive sale, and that is largely due to our AAA bond rating, which made it a very attractive sale across the markets, and we had record number of bidders, which was to our favor when we looked at how everything landed with the actual sale. When we look at our taxes compared to other communities, and we talk about this a lot, but it's interesting to see it in numbers. The tax rate for Lake Forest for 115, you can see, is 1.79. On a $1 million house, it would be $5,825. Then what we did was just compare it by community, and you can see in Deerfield, Highland Park, it jumps to 8,000, which is 2,000 or 2,200 more. You go to Libertyville, 128, it is a $9,000 increase. And then at Stevenson, it's 10,419. So, while we are increasing taxes, we are still among the lowest within Lake County, and we're proud of that fact, and you can see how home values remaining constant change in terms of taxes owed by the communities along the North Shore. If you want to know more, the Lake County website is phenomenal in terms of the resources it has to understand your tax bill. The QR code will help you. There is step-by-step analyzing each element of the tax bill, and you can dive deeper should you desire. And then if you want to visit our website, we have a tax calculator that is on our site that can help you understand what we have impacting your tax bill within Lake Forest or Lake Bluff and Knollwood. Moving into lighter topics now, I am excited that this Friday, roundtables with eighth graders. So, it's not exit interviews, but it's quasi-exit interviews where we invited eighth graders, and I'm going to sit with them on Friday and talk about their experience at DPM. So, I want to know, as they're matriculating to LFHS, what was the biggest takeaway of their experience? What could we do differently? What ideas they have for the future? And anytime you get to spend time with young people and you ask them what their thoughts are, they never disappoint me. So, I'm excited about that experience, and that again is this Friday in the morning. My hope is whatever I'm learning in that experience will be baked into what I share for the eighth grade graduation. So, I'm going to ask them questions specifically about what they think we should know as adults to help support them as they continue to grow into adulthood. I want to celebrate our APT. The food drive was last week. It was two weeks ago, and the amount of donations we had, the involvement that we had was just phenomenal, and I just want to acknowledge the work of the APT and everyone that participated, these type of efforts, truly making a difference in those in need within our neighboring communities. Tomorrow, we are having a Look Ahead. It's a webcast. We are going to stream it live at 10:00 a.m. There will be several members of the administration speaking. Dr. McHugh will be there, Dr. Fitzsimmons, as well as Ms. Kizer will be there with us. And we'll be talking about where we are in terms of test scores that we're seeing right now, and then we'll use that as the jumping off point to talk about curriculum for next year, changes we're making in terms of what we learned from Amplify, what we learned about the DPM schedule changes, how we're tweaking the block times, what we're doing in terms of class sizes, administrative changes, how we're looking at the strategic plan goals that are aligned with what the board's goals are drafted right now. So, there will be a lot of information shared. We're going to record it, and then we will post it, acknowledging that not everybody will be available tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. I would like to wrap up with a shout out to our very own Dr. McHugh, who last week was acknowledged as a Educator of the Year for Lake County, and he was among numerous nominees across the county, and I can't say enough about his leadership, and it is a testament to all the good things that have happened during his tenure. And while this is not the time that we are going to say goodbye to Dr. McHugh, it is the moment to acknowledge the tremendous amount of work he does and the support he offers for both districts. I want to thank him and congratulate him for that nomination. As I said, the last topic is a wonderful day every year, which is when we get to celebrate our eighth graders. So, Tuesday, May 28 at 5:00 p.m. at the Field House. If you have an eighth grader, we know it'll be a special day. This is my second year in a row with an eighth grader. I get a break after this year, but I am excited to be there and to celebrate not only as a dad, but as the superintendent. That concludes my superintendent's report, and thank you so much for your kind attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions should you have any.
I had one question on the taxes, just to clarify, because you compared different school districts, 115 with places like Deerfield, and I know that our district is unique in having shared services, and you had broken out 67 versus Lake Bluff versus 115. So, when you're comparing the two, are you comparing high school, elementary schools, or are they, like, are you comparing apples to apples in that way?
We are. The, when I did the comparison, that was a comparison of high schools to high schools. So, that would be just looking at those two. I did not intermix high schools with elementaries in that comparison of how the tax rate would change by million-dollar house. That's a good point. In the slide that we talked about, like, how it overall broke down, I think that was earlier on, so this is the percentage of the tax bill itself within those three communities that we serve, but when I compared our 115 with other schools, those listed there are only high school districts. So, each one of those communities also has elementary feeder districts that go into it. Stevenson has numerous. Libertyville has, is 70 the only one that goes into Libertyville? I think there's more than one that goes to Libertyville as well. And then Deerfield, Highland Park has both 109 and 112 that go in, and they would be separate taxing bodies.
Thank you. At this point in the agenda, we typically invite public comment on items that are in our actual board agenda. If it's okay with the board, I may depart from that a little bit, because I know we have families here who may want to comment on something that is not in our agenda. Are there any concerns about doing that? Okay. And just asking, and I'm going to go ahead and read the rules of the road for board comment. I will just say that if you are here to talk about class sizes at Cherokee, we welcome any, obviously, any public comment. You all should know that we did receive and review all of the emails that have been sent, and that we, as a board, have discussed this with Dr. Montgomery during our workshop at length, so your feedback has absolutely been received, and the board has considered it. So, with that, I will read the rules of the road, and if people want to continue with our comments, obviously, you are most welcome. The Lake Forest Boards of Education welcome public attendance and participation at all meetings. It's hoped that by utilizing these guidelines, participation will be maximized, both in terms of fairness and organization. Interested speakers should state their name before addressing the board. Members of the public will be granted a maximum of three minutes each to provide comment on the school district matters. Everyone has a right, within reason, to be heard respectfully. Members of the public will not be allowed to speak a second time until all members of the audience who wish to speak have been allowed to do so. Public comment should not be redundant, and all comments should be directed to the board. To provide accurate response, detailed questions posed to the board during public comment will be listened to and taken under advisement. The public is always welcome to meet with school officials to receive information, discuss ideas, or express concerns. If the public has any letters or other written materials, they may be submitted to the board clerk for public record. Tiana is our board clerk, and she will be timing participation and will advise when you have reached your third minute. So, at this time, are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? And please start by saying your name.
How's it now? Good? Okay. Thank you. Colleen Doherty and I were able to meet with Dr. Montgomery and Dr. McHugh, and it was a great meeting. It was slated for 45 minutes, and we almost an hour and a half. They shared a lot, we shared a lot. It was a, it was a great coffee. We really appreciate being heard. What we saw from the facts are that next year, if the Cherokee 4th grade is slated for three sections, we'll have 24 and 25 students per section, while Sheridan and Everett have 18 to 20, and we truly believed that was a significant inequity, not only for our students, but for our teachers and for the staff at Cherokee. There are so many issues, and we, we brought it up. We brought up all the data, and I'm sure that you saw it, but just down to the classroom size, the cubbies, the desks, the chairs, and there is acknowledged behavioral issues at Cherokee, and I don't think that anyone can honestly say that increased class size will benefit our kids right now. Our concern is we'll see more violent behaviors, we'll see more classroom evacuations, and we feel it's unfair to knowingly put our kids in that situation. We asked the district to make a swift decision. Dr. Montgomery assured us he would review the enrollment data through the summer and possibly add a fourth section for us. We strongly advocate that that decision be made quickly, in large part because Cherokee has experienced over the past two years, two last-minute hires, and both hires were not renewed for their second year, and we believe that showed the last-minute hire doesn't find a qualified candidate and just doesn't benefit our children. And so, we ask that the data is reviewed and that a fourth section is added to Cherokee as soon as possible. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Doherty. I also am a parent of a third grader at Cherokee School. Jennifer has outlined the broader issues. I want to take a minute to focus on specific impacts on our students. The proposed larger class sizes at Cherokee place children with IEPs and 504s at a disadvantage compared to their, the same, their peers in the same district. These students require more individualized teaching and accommodations, which will be significantly reduced with larger class sizes. With 18 to 20 students in the classes at Sheridan and Everett, but 24 to 25 at Cherokee, the students at Sheridan and Everett will absolutely get more time, attention, and support from their teachers. I don't know how anyone can look at this situation and consider it equitable. Last year, Everett was also in the same situation that we are in. If you refer to the classroom data Jennifer and I sent you, you will see that the current Everett 4th grade does have four sections with class sizes between 8, 17, and 18. Last year, the superintendent originally planned for them to have three sections of 23 to 24 students, but he made the decision to give Everett another section. This is exactly what we are asking for at Cherokee. How can this be equitable if the same situation had a different and better outcome at one elementary school, but is denied to Cherokee? I know you have received a lot of emails about this over the past few days, and I think it's very clear that every family in 3rd grade wants four sections. We ask that the board prioritize equitable learning opportunities for all District 67 students. Larger class sizes at Cherokee, while other elementary schools have smaller ones, contradicts the district's commitment to equity. We ask that the board, and we ask that the superintendent, make the decision to add a fourth class section. Delaying a decision like this when there are...
I have an upcoming fourth grader, as well as a future first grader. In the Cherokee Elementary School, I had no intention of even being here today, but here I am. I would just like to make note that school reputation in the district is that Cherokee's behavior situation continues to be top of mind for all of the parents, as well as people in the community. While we're looking at things such as class sizes and the difference between Everett and Cherokee, every Everett parent I've encountered loves their school, says there's no problem, says the behavior is much more in control, and it feels like they might have more adults. So my question is, at what point do we put the students in front of the dollars and bring in the people that we need to support the students at Cherokee?[1241.24][1241.24](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, everybody, for coming in tonight. And if there are no other comments, we will move on to committee reports. I think we'll start with Finance and Operations.
Good evening. Thank you. Finance and Operations Committee met on Thursday morning, May 2nd. We discussed the custodial bid, the ongoing transportation contract negotiations, and the year-end projections. Oh, come on, this is fascinating stuff.[1265.24][1265.24](LAUGHING). All right. So the full report is attached to the agenda, and I highly recommend everybody reads it because our district staff, Katie LeBeau and Whitney Dragger, did a great job of putting together a top-10 list, which made it entertaining and impactful with looking at the major items that attacked our revenue and expenses. So please take a look at that when you get a chance. Our next meeting is scheduled for June 6th. This promises to be a pretty busy one because of the closing out the regular business for the year and discussion on budget planning for the next fiscal year, or next calendar year of, I don't even calendar, next school year, sorry, of '24-'25. So really pending any questions you have, any from board members here, that concludes my report.
Any questions? Okay. Can we have a report from Spirit of 67, please?
Yes. Thank you to the Spirit. I know they've been working really hard. This is a big season for them with their grants process coming to a close. So on April 18th, Grants Day, the team made their way from school to school, surprising all of the awesome grant recipients. It was a very celebratory day, and the committee is grateful to all the dedicated teachers who put together such thoughtful proposals to benefit all of our District 67 students in so many different ways. They are also grateful to the generous donors. Through their partnership, the Spirit was able to award a little over $190,000 in grants for the 2024-2025 school year. So I think that's a really great number and something to be extremely proud of. We all look forward to hearing about all of the amazing opportunities that will come out of this grant cycle. During the summer, the Spirit will continue planning their 20th annual home and garden tour. Please mark your calendars. The date is September 26, 2024. They have four incredible homes and a hard-working committee that will be diligently working to make another unforgettable home tour event this fall. So thank you to the Spirit for everything that they continue to do, and we know that they will keep working on this summer as we go into the fall. And thank you to all the teachers and the staff who do engage in the grants process because it all does take, you know, extra effort to do the grants and to be engaged in that way, and that makes our school district even better. So thank you.
Any questions? All right. Moving to action items. Our first action item is the approval of the 2024-2025 Consolidated District Plan. May I have a motion to approve the consolidated district plan, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions about the calendar? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Next is the approval of the IASB Draft Resolution Faith's Law. May I have a motion to approve the IASB draft resolution?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions about this? I know we've discussed it before. Anything you want to say about it? Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay. Moving to the consent agenda, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a board member. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? And I'm told that at the 115 level, they do not read all of them, so I'm not going to unless anybody objects, including items 1 through 10. So moved. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions or any items that you would like to be removed? Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Carrar?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Motion carries? May I ask who made the motion?
I think I made it.
Okay. Thank you.
We had a number of FOIA requests this month, including from Frank McCormitt, Jeff Brincat, Parents Care, L. Lolite, and Dan O'Neil. And at this point, we usually ask for a second round of public participation from anybody who wants to talk about items not on the agenda. I suspect that there are not any, but I will open the floor again. Okay. A couple of announcements. On Tuesday, May 28th, is Deer Path Middle School graduation, 7:00 p.m. at West Campus. Is it 7:00? I thought it was at 5:00. 5:00, okay. Good, because I would have been really early. On Wednesday, June 5th, is the last day of student attendance. And Tuesday, June 18th, is a day I know our kids are looking for, oh, no, I'm sorry. That's the last day of student attendance is the day that our kids might be looking forward to. But June 18th is our next Board of Education meeting here at Rest Campus. That is the end of our agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn the City of Lake Forest School District 67 board meeting for May 14th, 2024?
Moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say, confirm your assent.
Aye.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.[1511.33]